Perfect, let's get this started then. Bear with me, looking for the agenda. Oh, thank you. Okay, well, how about we raise, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we should state, just for the recording, that it is, what is it, February 6th, 2018?
6th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. We're just doing it in a little odd order this evening. Okay, does anybody see a need to alter the agenda in any way, add anything, swap anything around, look good the way it is?
Sounds good.
Okey dokey. Audience comments, for those not on the agenda, seeing no audience, I assume no comments, so moving right along. Jump to item number three, business items. Public hearing, continued draft design standards.
Yes, so at our last meeting in January, we had a, we opened the hearing on the draft design standards ordinance. It's a pretty substantial document, and so we wanted to leave that hearing open in the event that anybody else wanted to testify, and also because our attorney was still completing his technical review of the document. And so the version that came out in the February packet had some changes that are all highlighted in yellow. And so the document that went out to you pretty clearly pointed out where there were differences. And so seeing as how we didn't have any questions or comments since last meeting from any of you, and being as there's no one from the public here tonight, I think that we're probably ready to proceed with voting on recommending that ordinance. We still need to open and close the hearing, though. Reopen and close the hearing, I think.
Do I have to reopen it?
Yes.
I'd like to reopen it. Somebody help me out here!
I do have a couple of comments to run through out here.
So go ahead and close the hearing, and then we can get into the deliberations.
Oh, 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 I thought you were, I was waiting for, okay.
No, no, you still open it, and you say, is there anybody here who has questions, and then you close it.
All right.
It's Robert's Rules stuff.
Okay. I'm gonna close the hearing. Any questions, comments, discussion?
I do have some discussion things. Mostly, kind of looking through and just starting to catch more editorial-type things. On page five of 112, the design review board. It says down at the very bottom, reviewing authority. Design review board, refers to the design review board. That's a proper name.
What page? Yeah, page five.
Page five of 112, under definitions.
Yeah.
Refers to the design review board. Since that's an entity, shouldn't that be capitalized?
Sure.
Also, in the departures, in the back, I kept seeing a little square, a little, excuse me, black circle with a white arrow. And I saw that a number of times before I figured out exactly what it meant to with regards to the departures. Under definitions, I was wondering if you might want to add departure criteria is art indicated with white arrow symbols, so that, and show the symbols, so that when people start reading through it the first time, and they come across that symbol, they know what it is before they get to the end of that section where it says, "Design are indicated by that symbol." Next, on page nine of 112. You may know when you're ready.
Yep.
The yellows. If you look at level two improvements, it requires, it refers to the 75 percent of the gross square footage. In level one and level three, it just says, "Square footage." I presume they should all say gross?
Yes.
You need to add the word gross. And if you do a spell search for the design review board, you'll find wherever you need to capitalize it, because there's another one on page 11 of 112. And there may be others I missed. Page 13 of 112. I had an hour last night, I had a chance to go through this. At the very top paragraph, near the end of the paragraph where it said, "The city shall review the request for pre-submitter design review board." I wasn't quite sure who that's going to go to. Know at the very beginning in definitions, it says, "Reviewing authority." Basically pointed to you, as a director. But I wasn't sure whether, it didn't say, "Shall request," or whether it goes to the reviewing authority, or who exactly it goes to. Does it go to the design review board, does it go to the?
That'll be the director or designee, we'll, we'll go through there and make sure that that's clear.
Okay. And then, this is more common on the marine section, on page 16 of 112. Kind of keep coming back to that part in my mind, and I think you've figured out what was uncomfortable with it. If you notice, under the portion of parking, which I think is also listed somewhere else. Basically, it says, "The parking in back, above, and beside," or something to that effect. Says it, it defines that somewhere else in here, and I don't have, didn't reference where it was. But, right now, with it in the back, in the marine section, basically, it's what we already have with a bunch of parking lots, basically, in, in kind of our best prime real estate.
Yeah, I, I think the intent there is to actually allow the parking between the street and the building, rather than on the waterfront side, and I'm not sure if they...
Where's the marine section farther back?
So maps one and two are the only maps that show where the marine designation exists, and then the marine section? Yeah, page 47.
Parking location, yes, on page 48. So I think, obviously, we're trying to avoid the parking up in front. But on that particular section, in the marine section, parking in the back is probably just as detrimental, because that should be, public spaces eventually should turn into, you know, open public space.
Yeah.
And so if you're forcing them to put it in the back, they can't put it in front. Now, I did look in the Russell Municipal Code, it said, "Within 500 feet of the storefront had, the parking had to be within 500 feet of the park of the front of the store."
Well, and ground floor uses in the central downtown don't require any parking. So we are actually not requiring parking, it would only be if you opt to provide parking. Are you allowed to install it, but given the cost and the space that it takes, and the availability of public parking, I can't imagine that a lot of people are gonna build parking downtown. And the, the parking that does exist downtown is mostly on city or port property, which is slowly, you know, disappearing with time as we work towards alternatives.
Okay.
But I, I see that there is an inconsistency here, because in, on page 48, it says, "Parking must be placed to the side rear or below or above uses."
Below would be a really bad idea down there.
Yeah, definitely. So if the Planning Commission wishes, we can clarify that marine parking issue as, as part of this. And, you know, one of the, one of the things we may want to consider doing is just saying that there should be no parking in the marine areas. I mean, based on, on where, unless it's either below or above ground, I, I'm...
Well, that will also be restricted by the shore master program.
That's true, yeah.
Because it's a, it's a non-preferred use in the shoreline environment, which is 200 feet from the water mark. So that would be very unusual for us to successfully get a new waterfront parking lot permitted and through ecology.
Then I think, I think clarification about that parking in that marine section would be wise.
Yeah. Well, we will, I think, we will look into that and, and talk to the consultant about that, but we can probably make a recommendation with, the recommendation that staff address the marine parking issue prior to taking this to council, and we'll share that concern with them. Is that, if that works for you?
Moving on, page 20, 120 of 112. Is there a reason that Taylor Street was kind of excluded from definition? We have landscaped on all the streets around it, or mixed?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, it can certainly be included, and I think, I think, does Austin connect through there or not? I can't...
Isn't Taylor the one, is that the one-way street by the jail?
Yeah, it's on the back of the jail.
I think so.
Backside of the jail. It's a one-way. I know it's a, it's a narrow road, and they do have some funky, not very attractive landscaping, a lot of it's done with broken asphalt. I just walked past there.
There may be even more reason to include it.
Yeah, we actually did notice how horrible it looks up there.
On the next page, page 21. The black dots aren't defined, and I presume those are private inside parking lot driving?
I think it, it should... Yeah, it's a potential future. It would be like a private road developed either as a storefront. I mean, it's, it's basically showing that through a community design framework, you would want to designate street frontages. And so I think in the, the community design framework chapter, that is discussed, and it's gonna take me a minute to find that chapter. Maybe 61 and 62? Yeah, it, so the community design framework master plan is required in certain areas, or is optional in certain areas. And it requires you to develop a master plan and to designate new streets and internal roadways, and designate those as either landscape or storefront, so that when the development happens within a site on those internal circulation roads, whether it's, you know, if you think of like the shape, the Safeway Shopping Center, right now, walking from the parking area up to Safeway is not a very nice pedestrian experience, and the sidewalks aren't particularly nice. And so this is talking about designating those drive aisles and making them more like a storefront street or a landscape street, depending on whether you're trying to go with like a campus feel versus a, a more urban feel. So that's, that's the point of those dashed lines, but perhaps they should be shown in the legend. Oh, it, it says, "Note dashed lines indicate planned streets or trails, locations are conceptual."
Ah, yes. I was looking for the dashed lines. On the next page, on 22, which is the upper Mile Hill area. Kind of the same question about why the change from mixed, with that big gap in the mixed use along Mile Road, Mile Hill.
That's just a, a really steep grade, and so we felt designating that, I mean, once you get to the movie theater, you're really starting to climb. And it's not, it's not easy to, to do a storefront street cer- certainly on that type of grade. And given that much of that is residential, we just felt like it was appropriate to have it up on top and more on the flatter areas at the bottom.
Okay, well, I mean, I can understand that, but I would also imagine that if somebody did so, decide to take a hankering to, to building along there, I know there's at least one restaurant, for example, that they wouldn't be covered in this, and so you'd have two different sections with potential gap in the middle that may be inconsistent.
Yeah, you could extend it certainly to the end of the movie theater, we, we talked about that.
But it's residential beyond that. And I have no strong opinion, I'm just kind of throwing it out.
Yeah. Anybody else have an opinion? I mean, I'm, we were really on the fence about extending it past the movie theater, and, you know, presumably, the movie theater could redevelop at some point in the future. So it might not be bad to designate that as mixed to the, just the end of that movie theater property.
I like that idea.
Okay, well, we can make that revision.
There's already retail there.
Right.
See if I'm running out of things yet. Page 36 of 112. And page 37. The table on page 37, under the storefront blockage standards, under the element, "Floor-to-ceiling height of 15 feet." If you look at the figure on the left, it says, "Floor-to-floor, 15 feet."
Oh, yeah.
I'm presuming you want to go floor-to-ceiling?
Yeah.
You could have a two-foot drop on a ceiling, and that eliminates your height.
You have a great editing eye.
Okay.
They use that same figure somewhere else further into the booklet, so that same figure's got that same, same sentence in there twice. And I think I was exhausted by the time I got to that point, so I kind of ran out of steam. I'm done.
Right. Is the, the rest of the Planning Commission comfortable with the items pointed out? Any objections? Okay, we'll, we'll make sure that that's totally clear when it, if and when it goes to council. Did anybody else have an hour to kill last night? All right. So the, the recommendation that we are seeking is for the, we've, we've sent out the ordinance and the design standards booklet, and so we're asking the Planning Commission to recommend both of those. I should note that the, we referenced 20.128 in the ordinance, and we actually renumbered the, the attachment as 20.127, and so that'll also be fixed, should you vote to, to recommend that.
Do I have a motion?
I'd like to recommend adoption of the draft design standards with the clarification and edits that were suggested.
Excellent, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, thank you.
Passes.
That was a lot of work. Good job, guys.
You did a lot of work on that.
Okay, moving on to business item 3B. Sorry, we just passed that one. 3C. Title 20, housekeeping amendment and repeal of Title 17.
This is about the housekeeping amendments that were presented to you initially at the January commission meeting. If you have a quick review over. What we've done is, since all of Title 20 was adopted last June, we've kept a running matrix of anything that we've noted. Where it was omission, and accuracy, some internal conflict, or a state regulation has been updated, those kinds of things. And we wanted to not bring these wordless little, you know, piecemeal things throughout the year, or we caught this, or we found that. But we, I think we'll try it in the future, at least going forward, to kind of keep the same thing running through in our, in our code. And if anything we noticed that year that needs updating or correction, we can just bring to you all at once, as we do now. So what we have are just everything we've noted, you know, from the first year, basically, with its implementation. There's nothing substantive in here, there's nothing that puts anything into code that's a new idea, or something that should have gone through a public hearing, and a public review process, gone to council. Again, all of these are simply trying to make sure that our code is up-to-date and correct, and form substantive clauses. And so what you were provided with was the matrix of all the deficiencies that were noted, and then the corrections itself are, strike that with an underline for your review as well. And so I'll be happy to go through this, if you have any questions about anything that's been here, or if you happen to have seen something else, you know, in Title 20 that's not on our list that you think should be added, we can add that as well.
So this is, this is just being provided in advance of the hearing at our March meeting. So it's just an introduction, if, if anybody has any questions now, feel free to ask, and if you have questions between now and March, we're happy to be as prepared as possible for those when we, we actually go to hearing. And so feel free to, to send us your questions.
Planning Commission, do you have any questions?
So is something like this actually necessary to do a public hearing? Do we think the public would actually worry about housekeeping fixes to the code?
My response would be better to be safe, and sorry, have somebody say, "Do you want to talk about that?" But I, you know, it's actually been subject to how much proof we're offering in the public comment. So it's, I still just make sure that there is no issue like that when it arises.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I looked through, I looked through your, your spreadsheet of the minor corrections and revisions, and they all seem pretty logical.
Mostly it's things that we've just noticed that we don't want to, things that we're still correct, but now we're not currently active to, to find something in like that.
Right.
Is there anything specific you need from the Planning Commission in regards to this?
Not tonight.
Okay.
Just introducing the issue.
All right. Any other comments, questions regarding this housekeeping from anybody? Nope? Okay, we'll move on to business item 3D then, regarding accessory dwelling units.
Yes, and this is another issue where we're just introducing a topic for a hearing that we're gonna schedule in March. And so the accessory dwelling unit ordinance is really intended to provide additional types of housing in Port Orchard. We actually currently allow ADUs, although the provisions for how ADUs are allowed are in a handful of footnotes within our land use table. So you have the big table of uses that says whether something is or is not permitted in a particular zone. And one of the requirements currently is that the ADU, one of the units, either the house or the ADU, has to be owner occupied. And so there's not really a good way for the city to verify that sort of thing. And so we wanted to actually kind of take a step back and make sure that we have good standards for ADUs, that we make it as clear as possible what is and is not allowed. And also, we're going to, as part of the ordinance, bring forward a, a template for a contract between somebody building the ADU and the city, where they would record this, so that a future buyer is going to know that one of the two units has to be owner occupied, and what the rules of that structure are, so that there's no confusion, confusion in the future as to whether it's an ADU or a duplex-type unit. And our hope is that by, by clarifying this process and streamlining the permitting for it, that we can actually encourage more of these to be built. One of the ideas that we've tossed around is actually going out to some of the prefab manufacturers who build little backyard cottages that come on a truck, and you just put them on to a foundation or footings. And you can have a really attractive cottage put up for a fairly low cost in a matter of days. And if we can make the permitting as easy as possible at the city, either people who, you know, need additional income can find a, a source of income, and also provide a, a source of affordable housing, or just smaller housing for people who don't want a three- or four-bedroom house, which is what is mostly being built these days in Port Orchard. So all in all, I think this will help encourage ADUs, and is there anything else you want to add, Carrie?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
So any, any questions from any of you about what's proposed here?
What is allowed currently?
It's not real clear, it, and the interesting thing, I guess, right now, ADUs are allowed, and it doesn't differentiate between attached and detached. What we wanted to do was clearly state that, yes, you can do a detached cottage, but we wanted to have some standards for that, such as ratio of, of square footage of the ADU to the, the parent home, and making sure that you aren't really building a second house on your property. We wanted to clarify what the parking requirements are, saying that additional parking is required unless your street has on-street parking on both sides, in which case you don't have to provide an extra parking stall, which is usually, you know, an extra cost to, to building one of these. And so really, our goal is to, to make sure that when they are allowed, they're not going to have a huge impact on the neighbors of the neighborhood, but also to make it as easy as possible to, to construct one.
Does it still fall into the same setback rules as a standard home?
Yep, yeah. The other thing I'll mention, that our utility building policies don't typically go to the Planning Commission, but in conjunction with this, we are proposing fiscal policies that are gonna make it so that you don't have to pay additional connection fees for an ADU. Right now, there's, it says that for an attached ADU, you don't have to pay a connection fee, but for a detached, you would. We actually want to make it so that if you want to build an ADU, it's considered part of your, your single-family dwelling, and you don't, you pay water usage, but you don't have to pay two base charges like you would for a duplex. And we feel like that'll help encourage these as well. And we've had a lot of back and forth with finance and utilities about this, and we've said, you know, there are, there are houses at McCormick Woods that have five or six bedrooms, and, you know, there's probably five or six people living in some of those. And you may have a, a smaller house downtown that somebody puts an ADU in, and there's two people living there, and is their water usage or their sewer usage really, does it justify a second base charge just because it's a separate structure? And what if you want to temporarily use that structure as your, you know, your man cave or something, or a, just a backyard office as opposed to actually renting it as a dwelling? Do you have to continue paying two charges even though you're not using it as a dwelling? So hopefully, the financial portion of this will also help streamline this. And then we're also making sure that the terminology in our utilities chapter is the same as what's in our land use code, because right now, they don't line up at all. I think in there, it calls it a mother-in-law apartment as opposed to a accessory dwelling unit, but our, our zoning code currently calls it an accessory dwelling unit.
So Nick, would that, if you've got an ADU, and there, would they be pulling off this up one meter?
Yes, you can't, as soon as you go with a separate meter, then you're, you know, you're creating two separate dwellings as opposed to an accessory use. You can always do a deduct meter that you privately maintain, that will tell you how much the ADU is using versus the main unit, if you want to split the bill yourself, but from the city's perspective, we're not sending two bills for an ADU, we're only gonna send one bill.
So Nick, is a detached garage considered an accessory building?
It is an accessory building, it's not an accessory dwelling.
Right, well, I see on page six that it says that the detached ADU structure shall be the only accessory building allowed on the parcel. So say, for example, if I wanted to build an ADU, I have a detached garage. So would I not be able to build an ADU because I also already have a detached garage?
No, and the idea there is that you would build it above the detached garage, not in addition to it, because then you end up with, you know, three buildings on your lot, and that's where I think, number one, you're gonna run into lot coverage issues in terms of how much of your site can actually be covered with a, a rooftop. But, yeah, the idea is, is that you get one accessory building, and if you choose to have an ADU, either combine it with a garage, or have it by itself and not have a garage, or have an attached garage with an ADU in the backyard.
Okay, makes sense. Yeah, well, literally, my lot, that would be ridiculous anyway, because it's tiny, but I just wanted to know. If other people have a slightly larger lot, like, they might actually want to have an ADU in addition to their garage, because maybe their garage is their man cave, and then the woman wants to build a she shed.
If they have that much land, they can...
I saw that on TV.
Yeah, I stole it from a commercial.
If they have that much land, they should probably subdivide the lot and build a second small house. And then they can get around that entirely.
Yeah, but now that gives me an idea, like, building up my garage.
Is it hers lots?
There we go!
I like it.
I actually have a quick question. The paperwork that's, in regards to this, it says ordinance number blank dash 18.
Yes.
The last whereas, it mentions March 6th, planning commission, and would that be February?
No, we're, we're going to hold a hearing next month.
Okay, okay, then my next question was public hearing.
But that's just, that's written in here in advance of what we would anticipate to occur.
Understood, okay, thank you for the question.
Things that are in red, like public testimony, it hasn't happened, so I need to remember that this-
And that was my next question, is did we announce, did we put the call out?
Hey, one more question in regards to ADUs and she sheds and man caves and all the rest of this. Let's say your wife has a she shed, and you've got a man cave, and your wife wants a greenhouse. Is that considered an ADU?
So, ADUs are going to be buildings that are over the threshold in the building code for requiring a building permit, and so, anything 200 square feet or less does not require a building permit, so like a really small backyard shed, like a tough shed or something, or a small greenhouse would be allowed, if you're, you know, if you're, if you're growing hundreds of tomato plants, that's probably a little much for, for your neighborhood.
Were you talking about a man cave, a she shed, and a greenhouse in addition to an ADU?
You should move to the county.
Well, we might, we might go there now.
As long as they're all under 200 square feet, you're good. That's the, that's the secret.
199.9 square feet.
200 square feet. I like it, I'm excited about this. I think it's smart. Anything that creates more affordable housing for Port Orchard is pretty awesome.
Planning Commission, do you have any further discussions, comments, questions regarding ADUs? We wrapped up that business item, and we will jump to section 4 for approval of minutes from January 10th, 2018, planning commission meeting. Does anybody see a need to make any edits or changes? If not, do I have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. Actually, can I call back that? Call that back? Unless I'm looking at the wrong one, January 10th, 2017?
Oh, good, aye.
I'd like to move to approve the minutes with one edit.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Least I can do after bungling the open-close bit.
Oh, you did great.
All right.
As far as David didn't catch that.
No kidding?
Well, I'm looking, what was the problem with it?
It says 2017 at the top.
Ah, gotcha. I'm still looking at it, I was like-
You know, you were like, no, it was the 10.
It was the 10. It wasn't the 3rd.
Further discussion of planning commission like that? No? All right then, I will adjourn the February 6th, 2018 meeting at 6:30 order.
This is one of our fastest ones ever.
I'm still really sorry. I hope you won't hate me forever.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Same to you, sir.
So, we had to give her a warning, but I actually thought she was kidding.
No. You thought I was just being mean.
How'd you find that?
No, she would, she just never thought that Trish would throw her under the bus. And I said, we were talking, and I thought of her, and I said, oh, well, by the way, you are now somebody, or something, I can't remember what I said. And she was like, what?